Now, I'm calling the media, the Carbon County Board of Commissioners, in order for these lives to remain silent, prayer, and a pledge of loyalty.
Honor, we thank you for each mind and heart that fills the presence of this room, as well as the lives that we will encounter afterwards. Set us free from comparison in order to work together efficiently, for only you truly know what we are setting out to accomplish today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the patriots, I pledge allegiance to America, and I pledge allegiance to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty of its own.
These proceedings are being recorded for the sole purpose of determining accurate written minutes. Recordings are overwritten following approval of the minutes, eliminating all unofficial records of these proceedings. Your first item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting held February 16th, 2023.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lucas Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Melzheim?
Yes. Are there any guests concerning county business at this time? No guests that wish to speak at this time? Then you will not be allowed to speak unless you're on the agenda then, folks. This is your opportunity. Okay. Hearing done, we'll move on.
The next item is a presentation of Pocono Mountain Visitors Bureau. Marlon Kistner and Brian Postet.
I'd like to give one back this morning, so good morning, thanks for having us. If you want to just skip to slide seven, I'll go through just some of the Carbon County updates, and then you guys can go through this, and if you have questions afterwards, just reach out to me. So, I just want to go through the support for Carbon County through the Visitors Bureau, and some of the things we've been doing over the last few years, from 20, 21. This is the breakdown of the different things we've done between media broadcast, PKN coverage, digital media, social media, and then the direct store to the Visitor Center, through Thor, and some other things that we've done through the Carbon County Hotel Tax Report, which is another thing that we've been working on improving over the years as well, and we're going to continue to do that. So that's about the last few years of broken out, and then we'll skip to the next slide. Going looking at last year, direct media buy spending from our overall buy, we estimated about $800,000 covered just Carbon County-related businesses, events, and other media coverage that was directly through the PMDB's media buy. PKN coverage for Carbon County, PKN's our television network 24/7, we're on 14 cable systems now, we're in about five and a half million homes in Philadelphia, New York, New Jersey, so there's a lot of coverage there that we control. All the content and a lot of it is going through there. We estimated, just looking at what the cable buys would be, it's about $100,000 in value. And then digital media, between co-ops, some of the things we've done with the Carbon County Tax Fund, and then just direct programs for Carbon County itself, was around $300,000. In social media, this is really just the boosted ads that we run on social media, that value there is about $75,000. So the overall media value was about $1.25 million. And that was all directly for Carbon County. We go back to that. Yeah. And then this is just some direct expense that we, you know, are happy to do each year with the Visitor Center. The Visitor Center here is our busiest visitor center, that's partly because of the train and just the popularity of Jim Thorpe. You know, looking at the cleaning, the staff that works there, the different rent utilities, IT, and the porta-potties. And, you know, last year, I think the porta-potties worked very well, we upgraded those, we added more, and we're going to look at continuing to find ways to improve that for this year as well. So, I want the staff to visit our center, and a lot of the visitors, but we appreciate that as well, having them access to that. These are just different things that are awarded through the Hotel Tax Fund that we have through Carbon County, plus the overall media expense, and then what was remitted back in the Carbon County Tax and Commissioners. And starting this year, we're doing a sponsorship for Mock Chunk Lake Park for three years at $150,000, and $50,000 for that to help with programming there, as well as getting some lake parks and some other programs that bridge the part there. And we're also working with Lansford to work with them on their train station visitor center as well, so more to come in the future. And then these are just some things that we accomplished last year. We worked closely with the Jim Thorpe Tourism Association, and we migrated their website under poconomountains.com, and really the goal was just to get, they're a volunteer organization, they know a lot of time to operate it, there was a lot of things that were missing from that site, so we moved it under the poconomountains.com umbrella, and really just kind of focused on ways that we could do that. We saved them about $60,000, because they would have had to go out and bid on that for an overall process. So, that was about a six-month process, and it's doing very well. You can see the numbers here, it's done very well compared to where it was on the previous site, and where it's going now. And we're aiming to upgrade that now, and I know Marlon will speak more on that on membership too, but it's really allowed us to, instead of competing for the same traffic and keywords and everything else, now it's all under one, and we're getting traction from them on those pages as well, so first of all. And I'll let Marlon give some more updates from here.
Yeah, you can kind of go through, maybe to the membership page. You can keep going. Keep going. These are just stats and stuff, you can kind of keep going through them. Maybe one more.
No, you have a lot.
Okay. Just overall on membership and what we're doing to support the businesses and members in the county. We have 528 members throughout the four county region, and out of that 528, we have 106 members here in Carbon County, kind of show the growth year after year, from '21 to '23, which has been a nice steady upward growth of members that we're able to support. And also, it's important for us to retain these members, so we're at about a little over 97% retention rate to date. We have an events calendar planned, we have training calendars planned as well, so if you want to go to the next slide. Our Tourism Day Summit's taking place on May 9th, and this is actually to support our members with training. It's a whole day training day on things like Google Analytics, social media, anything that they need to be able to get that support. Also, our big cleanup day is April 22nd. We'll be cleaning up Mock Chunk Lake Park, Jim Thorpe, and Leighton, so if anyone wants to come out and help pick up garbage, it's a positive thing for the county. And then we do another one in the fall. And then just a few other things that we have happening as far as events goes. And I think, next slide, I'm not sure what's next. Again, after this big event in April, we do have a cool celebration happening out at Pocono Organics, just to say thank you to all of our members. And this is just, again, a big day to clean up the area. We spend a lot of money, unfortunately, on picking up trash, but it's something that we're very passionate about. Next slide? And then I also just wanted to remind all of our municipalities and boroughs, we do have a community grant that's happening right now. I think we received maybe four or five from Carbon County so far, but it's a grant that's due on March 3rd, it's on our website, it's for beautification projects, trail maintenance, anything that has to do with helping the municipality, and it's a $20,000 max with a 50% match. So if anybody has questions, please share that. And again, that's for our municipalities and boroughs, I think Lansford put in, Jim Thorpe put in, and then a couple others from the area. But that's something we want to make sure we're supporting. And that's all I have for now.
Yeah, and, you know, there's a lot of information in here on the stats and everything else. One thing, you can go to poconomountains.com/dashboards, and we update that dashboard monthly, and a lot of the stats that are shown here are in that dashboard. So, anyone can go back, see the different things that are going on related to the Poconos, and we also have a tab on that page for all the research that we get here, which is updated here. Any questions?
Yeah, more some comments. I know Pocono Mountain Education Bureau is working with us on a business development plan and marketing to help support our local businesses throughout Lehigh County, or a party county, geez, I'm going to get shot. It would be my wife's responsibility. But, yeah, bringing business in, supporting the small businesses, and whatever we can do to work together to try to get the word out, build an incubator maybe, or help people that are planning to start a business, and maybe a little educational piece through the County Chamber Economic Development Corporation to move forward and working together, explaining better how we can work together and get the word out about Carbon County, and promote our local businesses in particular. The other thing I have is the litter pickup. Driving around Carbon County, the lack of respect for the environment is pathetic in Carbon County, and you can't blame it all on the visitors, that's for sure, because these are on the back roads and highways, et cetera, and the plastic bags, and it's just sad, you know, whether what we can do or how we can enforce it better. Front of line had a relative cigarette from another state, $1,000, fine. I mean, that's, those are the things we have to start clamping down on somehow, I don't know how we do it, but we certainly have to work together in promoting, cleaning the environment, but I hope everyone does have time to get out that day. It doesn't have to be that day, it could be the day of the year, and be a nice day along those roads, and just don't be laying there when you walk by, or you're dailing.
To that point, if first groups want to go out different days, we can get them supplies if they need to. So there are ways to do that, not just on those two days a year, so if you think, reach out to us. We do work pretty closely with PNDOP, and we're hoping that through education and everything else, we can get more awareness and work with them to get things done as well.
Yeah, I want to thank PMBB for the relationship that you have with us, specifically also Mock Chunk Lake Park, and the strengthening of that relationship there. You know, I will note that you all have a direct impact on county revenue, and I'm talking about helping us ensure that county lot stays full over the weekend. We had a record year of revenue that helped ensure taxpayers are not burdened by cost. We had over $1 million this year in revenue from parking, and that was a record number. And Marlon, specific to you representing PMBB, your work with helping us in regards to Mock Chunk Lake Park, and really maximizing public transportation to provide that for both citizens and visitors of Carbon County. A couple initiatives we're working that we hope to bring to the attention of the public over the next couple months. Lastly, I want to mention, PMBB, you know, we have a gap on the Switchback Trail, right? That's over the Hackle Burney Mine. And I know like Jay sitting back there, I'm sure Jay's real familiar with it, you know, up above his place where the Hackle Burney Mine is. That is a dangerous spot along the Switchback Trail. Senator Casey and Senator Fetterman have a couple earmark opportunities coming up this year, you know, and I brought this up earlier, but I would like to see PMBB's consideration of support for having a pedestrian bicycle bridge built over the Hackle Burney Mine to ensure individuals can safely transit that area. It is partly on county property, it is an issue and concern, but thank you for all you guys do already.
Thank you, very much. I think for me, as a resident and, you know, working for PMBB, I love the lake, it's been a great project to work, so, thanks.
Before you, I don't know if you're going to leave right away, it's still going on, but anything can move you in.
Do you just have a copy of your pound scale? That's why I have them taken.
Yeah, if I grab a copy too. Is that free? Yeah, you have a copy.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Much to the benefit of the public.
I did, I did, I was in the middle of it. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Nice to have you. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is Abby Guardiani from Nesquahoning, rural town folks.
Good morning. I get to piggyback the not-so-beautiful on the beautiful, but the fact of the matter is, that's part of what's here in Carbon County. And I am here to address the not-so-beautiful part, that hopefully we can all turn around, because that's what we love about Carbon County, and that's why we live here. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Abby Guardiani. All three of you knew me in my first life, as the school nurse at Leighton High School for 35 years. I had no plans for my retirement, that included me becoming a Borough Council member for Nesquahoning, but here I am, and much like yourselves, doing what I believe, and we believe, we believe, is best for our communities and our county. Today, I am here not just representing the Borough of Nesquahoning, but rather as a spokesperson for the boroughs of Palmerton, Leighton, Jim Thorpe, Nesquahoning, Lansford, and Summittill, with members of those Borough Councils and citizens attending here with me today. I also come here today with the support of the Carbon Schuylkill Industrial Development Corporation, and with representatives from the office of Senator David Argle. Everyone gathered here, including our county commissioners, have something in common. We serve our communities out of caring and love for our towns and our county. Today's meeting is an attempt by local boroughs and township officials to focus attention on the continuing problem of property blight, a serious and costly problem that affects the quality of life for everyone in this county. The problem requires a comprehensive plan, multiple strategies, and effective partnerships if we are ever to effect change. Today, we are here to discuss with the Commissioners one particular strategy, Pennsylvania Act 152 of 2016. Most of Carbon County is experiencing significant blight, as housing stock in the region is mostly made up of homes built 180 to 100 years ago. Many homes are side-by-sides, or half-a-doubles, where one side is occupied and the other side is vacant, abandoned, or blighted. Fire-ravaged buildings, dilapidated homes, abandoned businesses and other garages and outbuildings left undemolished for whatever reason can be seen in every community in our region. These properties represent a serious health and safety hazard for neighbors, our volunteer fire companies, police departments, and the community at large. Blighted properties result in the devaluation of everyone else's properties, and often lead to good and responsible homeowners' decisions to get out before it's too late. Blighted properties generate a sense of hopelessness, apathy, and loss of community pride for many responsible businesses, homeowners, and renters. Blighted properties loud and clear say to potential homebuyers and developers, "Don't invest here." One of the strategies to address the costly demolition of these properties is Pennsylvania Act 152 of 2016. The Act authorizes counties to establish a recorder of deeds fee to be used for demolition of property, of problem properties. The fee, not to exceed $15 for each recorded deed and mortgage, is deposited into a demolition fund that is to be used exclusively for the demolition of blighted property. This fee is optional, and it is not collected here in Carbon County. Currently, there are 26 counties in Pennsylvania, many different shapes and sizes, including neighboring Monroe and Schuylkill Counties, who have successfully established a demolition fund. Had we been participating this past year in 2022, when Carbon County saw 6,507 mortgage and deed filings, we could have generated $97,605 deposited into that demolition fund to help us address our worst-case blight scenario. Establishing a fee of $15 to record a deed of mortgage is not a burden to any one property owner when one considers the consequences to an entire community of allowing dangerous and unsightly structures to stand for years. I would suggest to you that this $15 fee is the best investment a homeowner will make when they make that purchase. It helps ensure their investment does not depreciate, and the value of their home and their property stays stable or increases. The representatives from each borough here today would like to share now what we look at and deal with daily in our respective towns, because this is the true burden to every taxpayer in Carbon County. In conclusion, we respectfully request that you reevaluate your position on Act 152 of 2016, and work with the Recorder of Deeds Office in establishing a demolition fund for Carbon County. We propose to you that establishing a user fee of $15 to record a deed or mortgage is not a burden to anyone when you consider the downstream consequences of allowing blighted properties left to stand. We have secured and submitted for your review the Monroe County's demolition fund program and its accompanying application as an example of how to move forward on this issue. We respectfully request that you convene regular meetings with borough and township leaders in order to build that win-win partnership on this and other critically important strategies that can be employed to address the serious problem of blight here in Carbon County. The boroughs gathered here today have already passed a resolution in support of the implementation of Act 152. Those resolutions have also been presented to you. I would like to share the very last portion of the resolution adopted by the Nesquahoning Borough. Whereas, the county commissioners have recently acted to apply for funds from the federal government designated to address blight, and thereby already taking the first steps towards a countywide program to eradicate blight. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the council members and citizens of Carbon County here before you today, support the efforts already made by the county commissioners to apply for those monies and address blight, and call upon the county commissioners to proceed further and implement the provisions of Act 152 of 2016. I thank you very much for your time today and your thoughtful consideration of our request.
I do have a couple comments. I'll just, if everybody can hear me. And I like this idea, and just so that everybody knows, we actually have the COVID-19 ARP whole home repair program that has approximately $1 million in it. But I think one of the things, I mean, everybody has blight in every town, and it ruins every town. And what my question was, like, last year, I had two meetings that were on zoning laws, on how to do things, you know, how you should, you know, lay on how to do things, you know, how you should, you know, lay out your town or whatever you got to do. My question always was, how do these people get away with these blighted properties? I mean, I hear they're transferring from one to the other. Are their citations not given to these people or how are they allowed to transfer property when there's a citation on it? You know, and like back to you, Abby, we had them meetings last year and I tried to get out to everybody. And I think one of the things that was missing last year was, in fact, I just talked to our EMA Director. We send out to every municipality to update their whoever's on the boards or whoever's there, and we probably get half of them back. So last year when I had them meetings, I called the ones back that I could, you know, that I could contact, but most of them that are on that list are either deceased or they haven't been on the boards for probably 20 years. You know, that's what our updated version is. So I think for us to help everybody throughout the county, I wish everybody would update, you know, because people pass away, people retire from the board or don't run for it again, and here we sit and we're trying to contact people. And last year, two meetings, I think we had, I think it was almost like 27 or 28. Now, there was maybe some from two from different municipalities, but it really went good. And I think we should continue with that and try to get it out to the people. Where do we go with this? I mean, we could invest millions of dollars in this and we're still not going to stop them people from not paying. Like, what do we have to do as a whole county to do that? I mean, yeah.
Part of, we met, the boroughs all met, we convened a meeting and we intend to continue to do that. The next meeting is going to be in Summit Hill on March 1st because that's, these are exactly the issues we need to work on. I can honestly tell you, Rocky, that in the short time I've been doing this, I've only been on council since June, and I've made a big splash apparently doing it. But one of the things, probably the main thing I've learned at this point is we're fighting blight from the wrong end. We're fighting it from the demolish end. We want to fight it from the prevention end, but unfortunately, so many buildings over the years have already reached this end, you know, that, we have to come and ask for money because they're, these cannot be, the buildings that we're showing are beyond rehabilitation. And $97,000, it's like spitting in the wind.
Yeah, that's.
And like, I know Commissioner, you have applied for that million-dollar grant. That is fantastic, like that's going to help. It's fantastic. That particular grant, if I've read it correctly, is homeowners apply for that grant. So boroughs are not eligible to apply for that grant. That is a homeowner grant. And I think you could apply for it if I, again, if I read it correctly, in $50,000, but I read pretty good, in $50,000 increments. So, and that is not just going to be for demolition, that is for rehabilitation. Fantastic, that's one of the ends we really want to work on, or demolition. But Act 152 is so specific, it is just for demolition, just for demolition. And I always liken it to being a carpenter and having that toolbox. And I don't want to show up on a job site with that one grant. I need more tools in my box than that. And the more tools we put in our box to eradicate blight, the more we're going to be able to get those buildings down and start working from the proper end. Let's prevent it. Let's pick up trash. Let's make our, let's make Carbon County what we know it is, what I grew up in, what you grew up in. And, but unfortunately, we have the dirty end of it to deal with.
And even like in my area there, we're having a lot of people coming in and all the people when I moved up there were, now I'm the elderly one getting there, right?
Tell me about it.
And passing away and people are just buying it from out of town.
Yes.
For rentals, they don't care, and we got to stop that. Like, I even said here, like, why don't we have a fine that, okay, the first time you don't do something, like, say if you let your grass go high, it's 25 bucks. The next second.
50 in Nesquahoning.
Okay, okay, we'll do 50.
We put it off.
Okay, we're going to do 50, but then the next time is going to be $100.
Right.
But then the next time should be $1,000 to $5,000. Hit them hard.
But.
And put it on there that they cannot transfer their properties. They're making sales and they're making money off of crappy property.
Here's another, here's another avenue though on this. We, and again, it's part of what we're going to continue to work on with our different boroughs getting together. We need our magistrates to cooperate with us too. We need commissioners, we need magistrates, we need, we need boroughs. We have got to work together. What happens, Rocky, many times is we fine them to 50 bucks, we fine them to 100 bucks, we fine them to 200 bucks, we cite them, we take them to the magistrate, carpet pulled out from under us. We have to work together.
Exactly.
We have to work together to make this work. And again, I'm going to go back and key on Act 152. I want to keep it and put it right here on the table. We need it. We need it.
I understand that. And the issue I have, we're taxing the unfortunate people that are just starting out. It's not just $15 in most cases here, it's $30 because the people aren't getting a mortgage, you're taxing them 15 bucks on that, and then you're taxing them again for the deed.
We researched our filing, the filing fees in all the, you're within a few dollars of one another. You're within a few dollars of one another, and I will tell you again, I will say again, a $15 fee is the best investment they'll ever make on that piece of property, and the downstream effect of what's going to happen to that piece of property if we don't do this is huge.
Abby, so as elected or a local official, all right, I'm trying to understand why the municipality would not want to keep management and control of mitigating blight, specifically the demolition, in the hands of its elected officials and therefore simply modify or create, if that particular municipality doesn't already have it, the move-in permit. Jim Thorpe has one for $5. Make it $20 and now Jim Thorpe can decide where those funds are going to go versus putting that onto the county to administer a program that may not meet that specific municipality's priorities because we have to look after 23 municipalities versus one.
Right. And I'm not sure, I think, I'm hearing apples and oranges here, okay? We're looking for money for blight to tear down a structure. If I'm, again, if I'm understanding you, Commissioner, we're, we do, we actually do what you're saying. There are move-in, move-out permits, things like that. And that money is used. It's used. It's another tool in the box. What we're here to ask for is give us the other, give us the screwdriver, give us the hammer.
You already have the authority to get these funds, right? You already have the authority to get an additional $15 per.
No, we do not. No, we do not.
You charge a, you have a move-in permit, correct? Or a move-out permit, a move permit, correct?
Right. So what you're saying is just increase our funds.
When you increase that by $15, it goes into your general fund.
So, the county commissioners do not have to administrate this program, okay? Many, if you read Monroe's, if you read Monroe's, it's administered by the Housing Alliance, okay? Your Housing Board, your Housing Alliance. So commissioners don't have to deal with applications, fee, that kind of thing. It's administered by, it can be administered, it can, if you want to, if you want to, you can do it, but it can be administered by the housing authority.
Well, is there a cost for that then, going through the housing authority?
I don't believe so. You can, you can simply have your housing authority administrate it. They actually open the account, they monitor the account, when the account gets to a certain, they, you set that, you set what you want it to be. Applications, you know, you notify boroughs, here's how much money's in the fund, you can make your applications. It's basically, you know, obviously, not every, there might be eight applications that go in for that amount of money. And so, just like a triage, just like a triage, being a nurse, just like a triage, you look at who's bleeding the most, which building is absolutely, roofs are collapsing, it's dangerous, somebody's going to get hurt, a fireman's going to get killed, something terrible's going to happen, and that's the one that comes down. And you know what? Tough luck, apply the next time. Life's not fair.
So, I think, you know, there's a lot of comments you could be made on that, and when you're trying to prioritize.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It could be one borough getting most of it, and what about the little municipality? The distribution is what I have an issue with. I don't mind doing my fair share, but how do you properly distribute it for those smaller municipalities? Even doing a lottery, you know, if we, you know, maybe we can get one torn down for less than that amount and do one and a half, it's still going to take 15, 20 years, and that's, that's just not enough right now.
And it can be set up, it can be set up in certain ways where you might want to have a borough have some match money, you know, if you're proposing.
You have our recorder of deeds just back there, she wants to make a comment, I guess.
It's just, it's under my understanding that the redevelopment authority has some kind of say as to who gets the money for these blight, like what township or what municipality gets the money. So it's pretty much their decision and not the commissioners.
Right, that's what I said, the commission, you really don't dirty your hands with it. You really don't. It goes over to the housing authority and they make the decision what town gets, what house is coming down.
I don't have a problem with the county commissioners dirtying their hands with responsibility. That's fine. I think the issue is if I were elected at the municipal level, the township or the borough, I would want to determine where those funds are going in the best interest of my constituents. And therefore, again, my thought is you're losing that control to direct funds.
And I feel, Commissioner, I feel we do that. I feel we have raised our, just like, just like you have said, we have raised all of our fines, we have raised all of our fees to generate as much money as we can, and we come here looking at you and saying, "Help us. We're doing our best. Help us."
I'm glad that all your municipalities are meeting, are they all showing up? It's like our council of governments, I hate to compare it like this, we have maybe half of the people here showing up. This is the reason we started this, is to work together on these different issues. Now, this is out of control, it's more than we can do a council of governments meeting, which for those that are not familiar maybe, is representative from all municipalities, membership, and we try to work together on different items, how we can save money together, working together, some things didn't work out for us, so we move on to other things. We tried to do like sort of a, you know, garbage collection, but everybody has a different contract. We've got a countywide contract, then we save money.
That's why we've decided to meet, Wayne, because this is not something a small borough can do on its own. You cannot fight this problem on your own.
No, it's not. And it's a county, the local municipalities, our legislators, and a lot of our, the court system on a, this is, you know, ludicrous, you know, just leaving these people go. It's the, is it, I don't know for sure, is it most of the properties that we're talking about, people that do not even live in the county and those.
Some are, some are. Some are, some are, some are owners.
How do we know that? And these figures are going to change. The housing market is dropping right now, there's less sales and everything. I don't know, Jay, because I gave the opportunity in the beginning to, I'm sorry, I hate to cut you off, because we can't keep going like this, but.
Abby, we do want to get you to a COG meeting though, because there's obviously municipalities that are represented there that aren't currently represented. Now, the issue has been spoken about loosely there, but I think it would be great if we could set you up for, to come to a COG meeting and have a good relaxed conversation on the issue and try to entice others to get on board and see the reasoning and rationale that you all have on this issue.
I'm glad to.
Yeah, and I'll start coordinating.
How do the boroughs meet when you meet?
Right now, at the, at the last meeting where we organized this, it was, I want to do it in order, Lee Hyten, Palmerton, Palmerton, Lee Hyten, Jim Thorpe, Nesquahoning, Lansford, and Summit Hill. That's who, those were the boroughs that showed up.
I mean, we could get out and move them, and like I said, my only gripe on this whole thing is we'll have $99,000 that might take two or maybe three homes down, it's possible. But I just want to stop it from gaining four every year or five every year. And I said, it's very important, I think, with this zoning, that we have to try something and find these people, and I think you hit right on the head on that, on why are they letting these people go? Are the magistrates just dropping the cases or what's happening?
Our, our plan is to meet with magis, meet with magistrates and plead our case there as well. You know, we're not just coming here. We're, we're going to try and, we're going to try, one of the very first lines I said was we need partnerships to do this.
We have to come up with better solutions. That million dollars, you know.
That million dollars is also going to be gone.
It's just a bunch of.
$50,000, right, $50,000, there's 20 buildings and it's gone. And that's the thing about Act 152, I realize it's not a tremendous amount of money, but it slowly, it's not a one-and-done. It slowly builds back up. It's, like I said, it's just another tool in our box.
Yeah, Don, I've sent your recorder to you, because I'm sorry I gave everyone the opportunity before the meeting to speak, so.
Just to give a more realistic number, I know last year, 2022, this fund would have, would have built up to $99,000 according to my, because we include the timeshare deeds also. Just this year, from January to February, the amount of deeds and mortgages that we recorded was only 561. This year compared to 1,000, say 54 last year, so it's like less than 53%, 53% less. So the numbers that you came up with are sort of unrealistic because of the market.
It's always going to fluctuate.
So it would probably take about four to five years to build up enough money in this account to even.
Yeah, 2022 was a great year for mortgages, yeah. We realized that.
Bill Richards from Senator Orman has covered.
Just to add, I know I'm sort of out of line here, not the agenda, just to comment on Abby's comment about the magistrate. We, the Senator is, will be meeting with the magistrates on that issue. He already has a meeting set up on just what we're talking about. The other, the other thing is the grant opportunities that will be out there. Schuylkill, Schuylkill, Mary Beth Dougherty here, she handles a lot of the blight for Schuylkill. She could, she could.
Well, we have, we have for years have had a very successful county demolition program in place in Schuylkill. Same problems that Carbon is seeing with these old coal communities. We enacted Act 152, I don't know how many years ago. We've successfully been able to get several state grants after, you know, after we enacted it. Did it help with securing additional money? I don't know. It's something, I won't belabor the point here and bore everybody, I can be off and running talking about blight all day. Every single issue that the Board of Commissioners has brought up and addressed to Abby, I would be more than happy to have conversations with all of you. Your meeting next, is it next week? I mean, if any of the commissioners would like, I would be more than happy to volunteer to come down and sit down and talk and try to address all the issues that were brought up here and why they can or cannot be implemented. Besides working for Jim Rhodes and now Dave Argo, I was on Borough Council in Girardot for 20 years, so I've seen this issue from that side of the table, this side of the table, and, you know, the legislative, legislative side of the table, trying to, you know, find some tougher ways to go at this problem and try and find some funding opportunities. So like I said, I'm not going to belabor it any longer here, but I would love to sit down and talk to any or all of you more about how Act 152 came and why we chose, you know, to add fees to recorder, you know, recording deeds and mortgages. You know, I, you know, to share more information with the commissioners since you're being asked to make this decision. Whatever I can do to help, I'm more than happy to put myself out there.
Is your meeting in where?
It's in Summit Hill on the first at 6:00 PM at the Borough Building.
What time?
6:00.
6:00. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Appreciate it.
Running people off at one of the.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Next Monday, you come back next week under Cessna. Okay? Thank you. Thank you, buddy. Thank you. Thank you, buddy.
Next item is the report of executive sessions, Tom.
There was an executive session held on Friday, February seventeenth, starting at nine A M. for personnel reasons. Tuesday, February twenty-first, and eleven A M. for personnel.
Next item, the department reports. Budget transfers for two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
There are no supplemental appropriations. Expenditures, approval of check numbers two, three, four, four, nine, five through two, three, four, six, five, five for expenditures through the general con clearing account. Totally seven hundred eighty-six thousand, four hundred sixty-seven dollars and fifteen cents.
Motion approved. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
The Treasurer's report?
Move to it, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes. Okay, at this time, a recess with a salary board meeting. I'll be salary board of work. Any guests concerning salary board business? We're going to move on.
Report of executive sessions, Tom.
There was one executive session held on February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three at one P M.
Commissioner's office established the position of one fiscal legal assistant at eighteen dollars seventy-five cents per hour, grade eight, step B, effective February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion approved. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
Abolish the position of one fiscal assistant paralegal at twenty-one dollars seventy-four cents per hour, grade eight, step H, effective February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion approved. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
Abolish the position of one fiscal assistant paralegal trainee at eighteen dollars twenty-nine cents per hour, grade eight, step A, effective February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion approved. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
Information technology, change the rate of one director from thirty-five dollars ninety-one cents per hour, grade S twelve, step L, to twenty-eight dollars five cents per hour, grade S twelve, step B, effective February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion, move to modify the motion.
Do we have a second for modification? Not hearing no second. Motion dies. Back to the original motion. Mr. Honor, you did.
I, I made the motion.
Do we have a second to that original?
Second.
Discussion. Well, in the last twenty-four hours, and right now, the public who are present can see, we have an I T issue. This is actually the third issue in this, what, twenty-four hours? And this is the most minor issue that we've had here, right? I can assure you that there is no more important and critical infrastructure to the operations of effective and efficient county government than the information technology infrastructure. Operates our computers, our phones, our connectivity, not only to our departments within the county, but to the state, uh, for example. And all of those are having significant challenges right now. And this isn't even to worry about cyber issues, which fortunately, we've been able to preclude any disruption of our services due to the work of our I T department and the security measures that we have in place. But our I T infrastructure is a vulnerability, and it is also one, argue a liability to us. And therefore, the selection of the next I T director is the most important decision that is going to be made during this board's four years. I have no question, uh, in my mind. I'm fortunate to sit as the vice chair of C cap's Technology Committee and interact with I T directors from across the Commonwealth and understand the importance of their position and the extreme responsibility and burden that's placed upon them to ensure our systems remain operational. We've been interviewing, uh, four individuals, uh, in, in the past week, but that includes, uh, looking at probably about a dozen, uh, different resumes and applications that came in. And we've come down to two potential candidates. One with about eight years collective I T experience and another individual with twenty-five plus years of I T experience. The one individual who has eight years collective actually has four years of county experience, right? The other individual, twenty-five years, has eight years of county level experience in a county a little bit larger than Carbin County. We need a significant, uh, change to take place in our I T department, right? And we have that opportunity to make that change, to bring in new ideas, new concepts, new innovation, new platforms, and new integration throughout the county's branches, right? Row officers, the courts, and the Board of Commissioners departments, right? There are around twenty, twenty-one, uh, departments. If we continue, or we make the mistake of choosing to continue with inbred hiring, we're doing a disservice to the county, to the residents, and to our departments and those who are responsible for providing services to county government. The individual who is being considered at this particular salary, highly competent, think the world of him, work with him regularly, right? Ensure, try to help, mentor him in some specific areas where as a young I T specialist that was required. We have a very young I T department, one that needs mentoring, leadership development, bringing in new ideas from the private world, from other counties. We have that opportunity to do this today. Another concern, having spent thirty-four years developing future generations of leader, the one thing you never do is put an individual who is unprepared to assume a certain level of responsibility or leadership, to put them in that position. It's irresponsible of an individual who has to select the next generation. The individual who's being considered under the salary, three to five years from now, he will absolutely be ready for the next level, to assume a directorship. He's moved into his current position four months ago to the next level in Carbin County Government, right? The individual who was in that position before him was in there for an inordinate amount of years. As a matter of fact, that individual's still under contract to the county. Talking about contracting, if we don't bring in the right person at this moment, we're going to continue to burden the taxpayer with two significant consultant contracts we have of former I T employees. We need someone who can come in and quickly absorb the duties and responsibilities and with the knowledge to take us to the next level. I'm significantly concerned with the candidate who's being considered for this position. Not because I doubt him or question him, but simply because I know we can do much better and there's a much better candidate out there, head and shoulders above what is being considered. And I find that irresponsible action should we continue to move forward with that selection. I encourage the public to do a right-to-know request, to get the applications, the cover letters, the resumes of the individuals. That is authorized to do. It's been done. I know specifically in twenty nineteen, when the V A director was hired, there was a private citizen who did a right-to-know act. Get that, look at the candidates, and look at who you would have chosen to assume this great responsibility, to ensure the protection and the effective operating of our infrastructure. That's all I have.
To begin with, this person that was interviewed did work for another county for several years, seven years, I believe it was. But he did not have the responsibilities of certain departments, which our I T department has, such as nine-one-one and others that had their own I T person. So he is not coming in totally prepared, unfortunately, and to sit through the interviews and compare a job applicant, uh, job application are two different things. What you learn in an interview could be a great asset as well. I firmly believe that the person we're picking can do the job. No one can step into that job and know everything that is going on, whether they were in another county or not. They have, they do business differently in other counties. We all know that. They have different departments and operate differently. We have, since, uh, that person who's there, we have many, many different programs that our I T personnel are dealing with. Almost every office has a different setup or different program. They have to learn a little bit of everything. But I certainly think our choice has a good head start on being able to do that job and learning those systems.
And just to tag on that a little bit, um, I feel our candidate, uh, it doesn't matter which candidate we have here, we're still going to have to have these consultants in here no matter what. And the reason I feel that our in-house candidate is the one, because like Wayne said, he knows all of our buildings, he's been working on different structures or they've been doing different things with the I T that we know. And I do believe in our youth. Uh, and I think with the other candidate we looked at, yes, he did work in another county, but it was probably seven years ago. And if you look at technology today, what was yesterday is not today. And I think, like I said, I think our youth are our future. And that's why I think our in-house candidate should be the candidate.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
No.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
Okay, in terms of business, none on the agenda, may adjourn. Personnel report. Are we convening the meeting?
Okay, next item is the personnel report for county departments.
Motion approved. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
The acknowledgement for courts and row offices.
Motion acknowledged. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes, with the exception of the appointment of the probation officer one, hiring under the courts, due to the court's consistent non-compliance with Act fifty-seven of twenty twenty, which serves to protect law enforcement agencies and the public from placing policing authorities in the hands of those with a history of misconduct. Two county solicitors, labor counsel, uh, have not determined that adult probation is exempted, uh, from Act fifty-seven requirements. I have seen no legal ruling providing such exception. I have been seen nor have been presented any ruling by the executive agency for this program that the aforementioned are exempt. The current governor of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, former attorney general in that position stated, if you don't participate, that's against the law.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
Correspondence was received as listed. Copy could be made available to the press upon request. Advertising for approval, authorize the advertisement of electronic bids for the H V A C replacement at the Carbin County Animal Shelter via pen bid.
Motion approved. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
Authorize the advertisement of electronic bids for the repaving of boat launch B and restroom replacement at Mockchuck Lake Park via pen bid.
Move to approve. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
The two thousand and twenty-three budget for approval, authorize the transfer of additional funds within the two thousand twenty-three budget to cover the salary of the Treatment Court Coordinator established at the salary board meeting of February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion approved. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
Courts, interpreter services grant for approval and execution. The court interpreter services grant application for language access reimbursable costs incurred during calendar year, fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, totaling eleven thousand, three hundred ninety-nine dollars and eight cents.
Motion approved and executed. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
District Court Office for approval and execution, a one-year grant, excuse me, annual agreement with Blue Ridge Communications for local and long-distance service at the District Court Office in Jim Thorpe, Pennsylvania for a monthly requiring fee of ninety-nine dollars and eighty cents.
Move to approve and execute. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
District Attorney for approval and execution, the award letter for the Raza grant in the amount of ninety-three thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars from the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency Victim Witness Program for the District Attorney's Office through the term of January one, two thousand twenty-three through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion approved. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
Information technology for approval and execution. An agreement with Pentel Data for additional public I P addresses to provide access for first responders to the computer-aided dispatch server located at the nine-one-one communications center for an additional monthly fee of twenty dollars for a total cost of one hundred forty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents.
Motion approved. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
The solicitor's report?
Thank you. For the Animal Shelter Advisory Commission, seeking approval and execution of a revision to the bylaws for the Carbin County Animal Shelter Advisory Commission, Article Five, Structure of the Commission, Section Two, Election Terms, stating that reappointments shall be for a three-year term to coincide with Resolution twenty-one dash eighteen.
Move to the next. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
A banner request was received from Lee Hyten Downtown Partnership, uh, Carbin County Economic Development Corporation, uh, for a, uh, the display of a banner from February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three to March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three for kilts on wheels. Uh, and that event is scheduled to take place on March eleventh of twenty twenty-three.
Move to approve and execute. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Noctime?
Yes.
For the five-twenty-five Iron Street Project, seeking ratification of the acceptance of proposals from Corporate Environments of Bethlehem, Pennsylvania for furnishings for the offices of children and youth at the five-twenty-five Iron Street location. Uh, this is a Co-Stars contract, excuse me, zero-three-five dash E-two-two dash one-five-nine uh, for two hundred sixty-three thousand, two hundred nineteen dollars, seventeen cents. Uh, Co-Stars contract zero-three-five dash zero-one-eight for one thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars, twenty cents. And. And for Pennsylvania State contract 44000025648 in the amount of $32,579.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
No.
Mr. Nolstein?
Yes.
For Parks and Recreation, seeking approval for the quote from Blue Ridge Polaris of Wapo Wallen, Pennsylvania, to purchase 2023 Polaris Ranger 1000 Sport EPS for use at the Machonk Lake Park at a cost of $14,999. Title fee of $22.50, document fee of $99, freight fee of $500, setup fee of $200, and delivery fee of $250 for a total cost of $16,070.50. And this was the lowest of the three quotes that were received.
Move to approve. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Nolstein?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Any further business? Please, two points, Mr. Honor.
Move to approve.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yeah, just one issue. To those seeking positions to be placed on the ballot in May for the primary, the elections office distributed a Carbon County Candidates Guide. And I just want to bring to the attention of the public, and more importantly, those running, considering running for placement on the ballot for the commissioner's race or circulators of their petitions. On page seven, it incorrectly stated, "Signers can only sign as many petitions as there are offices up for election." As many of us are familiar, there are three commissioner positions up for election. However, you can actually only sign for as many petitions as office, excuse me. Each signer may sign petitions for as many candidates for each office as he or she is permitted to vote for, and no more. You are only able to vote for two commissioners. Therefore, you would only be authorized to sign petitions of two candidates of your party. And there is one other small comment some of the community boroughs were making a concern. I hate to use the word concern. It was just brought to our attention, an affidavit question. And I think, Bob, maybe you could answer that, yeah?
Sure. Yes, the candidate petitions for the primary election, there are some of the petitions that are otherwise absolutely identical, but some require an affidavit, the sworn affidavit of the circulator of the petition. And the newer forms under the current law, and this was changed by Act 77 of 2019, which changed the requirement from the sworn affidavit, meaning it would have to be notarized, to just a statement of the circulator, which would certify that it's true and correct under the penalties that are associated with uns sworn falsification of authorities, which is a criminal penalty. So there was some concern about the use of these two petitions. And I did consult with the Department of State. And in fact, just this morning, I received a call back from the Office of Chief Counsel. And their analysis is consistent with mine that if they're using, if a candidate is using the prior form, the 2019 form that requires an affidavit and that it be notarized, that the circulator would actually be exceeding the requirements of the current law. So it doesn't really create an issue because the law became a bit less stringent, but it is still subject to penalties for uns sworn falsification, so.
So they do not have to be notarized?
Well, I would say if you have the form that requires a sworn affidavit, meaning it has to be notarized, yes, I would recommend that be notarized because otherwise, it doesn't have the statement that it's subject to the penalties for uns sworn falsification. So just treat each form strictly as it reads. So if you have the affidavit, have it notarized. If you don't, then it's, your signature is the, your acknowledgement as the circulator that you're subject to those penalties for uns sworn falsification.
Yep.
Mr. Nolstein?
Yeah. One of the things, you saw we had four resignations on live cards, probably because they were carried over from last year and not available this year. We are hiring, I think, the starting rate. I looked at my salary board, it said 1365 there. I thought it was at the 13, I'm not sure now. But it is 13 for sure, not more, unless I misread it or it impacts with the copy I had. But we are looking for live cards. We eliminated two, we went from 12 down to 10. I had that going though. But we certainly have plenty of positions open. We're paying a little bit better now. And I think that starting rate was only 11-something last year.
1365 now. Other than the lifeguard supervisor.
It's 16.
Yep. 16.
Yeah, it is 1365, which is good. I know I recently saw the news in some place location, it was paying 17 a month. I mean, we all have that problem. Last year, Palmer and Lee Heighton, et cetera, they had swimming pools. So I wanted to bring that up. The other thing I wanted to bring up, just throw in a little bit, is the human services priority. Breakfast, that's on April 21st, that Whispering Plains, which is fire company, Pen Forest Fire Company, number two on 90, yeah, 93. And that starts at nine o'clock in the morning. We open up doors. Breakfast starts at nine, doors are open at 8:30. And this year's subject is one that we're all suffering. It's live here, work here, keep Carbon County strong. And it's really to focus on retaining our employees, hiring the right people, the difficulty we have in hiring and filling positions, the difficulty in retaining them. And getting good qualified applications is another problem as well. And what really occurs when we don't have the proper police people in place, how it affects our operations if we don't have the right personnel and personnel in position to begin with. I know here it's leaving some people. It just puts a strain on everyone else when we are short-staffed, children and youth in particular. We have at least how many positions open there? At least six, you know, and probably four, 12.
Total.
Yeah, total between fiscal and everything else. So there's a lot of offices corrections, of course. Even the dispatchers were down. And like other counties, I saw Lackawanna County as well had problems with dispatchers. They have 35 mayo positions, they only have 20. Their dispatchers are working overtime to try to keep up. So we'll have, we have four speakers. And we're going to be talking about the issues in kind of a panel discussion. So tickets for $15 for breakfast and sponsorships available.